Everybody, welcome to the March 27, 2020 special school committee meeting. We'll start with roll call alphabetically, so when I call your name, please say yes if you are here. Steve Bjork?
Yes, I am here.
Jen Bryson is here, MJ Burns?
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly?
I am here.
Joe Newhouse?
Yes.
David Ragsdale?
Present.
Jay Samaha?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. We are going to move right into the Wilmington High School field trip to England, Ireland, and Wales. And I'm going to pass that over to Dr. Brand.
Thank you, and good morning, everybody. Before, I'm going to turn it over in just a minute to Linda Peters, high school principal. She, I hope, hopefully she's now logged on, or she, I know she's in the process of doing so. You know, this is, this meeting here is somewhat of a, obviously, a special meeting just to deal with what has been a very difficult and challenging situation, certainly of note, not just for Wilmington, but I can tell you, and as you might imagine, there are dozens of districts, I don't know an exact number, but I can tell you from the exchange of information online, there are dozens of districts that were in the exact same place that Wilmington was, in terms of having a scheduled trip for students internationally. And the fallout, obviously, from all of this is very difficult to navigate. And up to this point, and still as we meet this morning, to my knowledge, there's no overarching legal decision or state directive that makes this cut and dry and easy for everyone to navigate. What you have is a situation here with a number of districts using a multitude of different travel companies, and each one dealing with this particular situation somewhat differently. You'll, I'll take you back in a little bit in time, that when I made the decision to cancel the trip to England after school committee approval approximately a year ago, it was with the foremost thought around, obviously, the health and well-being of our students. That was before any ban that was put in place at any level, or any agency, to indeed embark upon the travel. The fallout of this has been a steady stream of efforts to communicate with travel companies, and certainly with Ms. Peters' help and Ms. Tucker's help, who was one of the trip liaisons. And we've kind of, we've finally gotten to a point in better understanding what the options are before us to try and take some action. We know, and I'm well aware, of the fact that what's at stake is the financial wholeness, if you will, of a number of families, arguably all of our families, who are part of this trip. Unfortunately, there's sort of no easy path or route to take here. And, and so it's been trying to understand what the options are that would be best to try and preserve as much financial wholeness, if you will, of our families. With all of that as a backdrop, I'll maybe ask Linda if she can to jump in. She has been working very hard in the communication and keeping me up to speed, but I know she, or Ms. Tucker, certainly can speak a little bit more specifically around what the travel company has laid out specifically for our options. So Linda, are you there?
I'm here, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Nice to see everybody, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. In trying to navigate through this, we're looking for the best options for reimbursement for our families. And what we've been told through many communications, and the latest one being just last week, they have changed their policy somewhat, but they're referring to it as a postponement policy, which means that the best option for our parents to be reimbursed, any type of refund at all in terms of cash, would be for us to postpone the trip and then have our parents decide if they can participate in that postponed date or on that postponed date. If they cannot, they will be refunded all by $800 or $600, depending on whether they purchased a travel insurance. All the other options involve simply getting vouchers, which our parents, especially if seniors, are not interested in. Even some of our parents of juniors are not sure that they would like their student or their child to take a trip next year, even if we do postpone. But that seems to be the only route that we can go in order to help these parents out in the best way that we can in terms of getting a cash refund. Well, that's why we're here, is we're just asking permission to postpone until next April. We have a trip already approved, it is not to the same destination, but if we can change the destination of that trip and then indicate to Explorica that we have postponed the trip, then we can notify families of the postponement and ask, or make, let them make the decision as to whether they would like to continue to travel with us next year or to cancel.
Thank you, Linda. Are there any, are there any questions? I see you raising your hand, MJ, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Peters. I, I have a quick question, just, I, I need a little more, I'd like a little more clarification. So I know that the board just approved, prior to the situation, the field trip to Austria. I can't remember the three destinations for next April. Are you ass, are you saying that we're going to postpone that trip and instead see who may want, want to continue on the, the England, Ireland, Wales one? Or, I'm just a little confused now that we, we've started collecting for that, you know, 2021 field trip. Can you just clarify for me how this rolls out? And if, only because I, from your response, I think, I want to know what happens if we do cancel, you know, if we postpone now and then find that there's not enough participants going forward and cancel. I just was curious as to what that would look like for students and families if the trip was canceled due to lack of participation.
Well, my understanding is that, again, I, I think Mara might be here as well, but my understanding is that we would just change the destination of the approved trip for next April. I don't believe they've made any contact with students about this trip. So I don't think they've collected or arranged it yet. Could be wrong, but maybe Mara can let me know.
Mara, raising her hand, go ahead, Mara.
And we haven't even advertised the other trip for students yet, because we were waiting to come back from England to start. It's, it's a, it's a huge process, so we're waiting till we came back from our, from this trip before we started planning and recruiting students. So it isn't, we can just cancel that trip, we can cancel the Austria trip with Explorica, because no one's signed up yet, and that's enough to do it. And then move, just move the dates of the current England trip to the dates for next April. So it would just kind of replace the trip to Austria, and then we can, we can tackle that trip.
Gotcha.
Mara, Ms. Peters, I just have a quick question. Will parents get their, their refund now? As soon as that trip is postponed, will parents who decide not to opt into that, will they automatically get a refund?
The letter that I saw that they're waiting, you know, for us to determine a date of postponement, the letter indicates the policy and gives them a link to how to, the fee to cancel, if they choose to cancel. I don't know how long that will take. And to answer, and the question, I'm not sure. You know, if everyone cancels after we postpone, and we will have to cancel the trip, I'm not sure what that will be, what that will result in. I have asked that question, and I haven't really gotten an answer. It's, I've only gotten, this is our policy, and, you know, the, the three options, and we're looking at the first option, which is postponement.
Mr. Bjork?
Is there any chance that any governing bodies are going to step in and institute any regulations regarding this type of thing?
You know, I'll, I'll chime in there. I think right now, in, in the midst of everything else, this is a little bit further down, you know, on the, on the list. But that said, there's been no sort of stoppage in the communication around this, and I think the growing pressure on these travel companies. So, you know, it's impossible to predict, or certainly say with any certainty, but with everything going on, it wouldn't surprise me if that was something that we ended up seeing down the road. The question, of course, is how far down the road that might be. And, and again, sort of what, what's on the table right now is options. I know it seems a little bit difficult to sort of navigate or consider, but this idea of postponement seems to be the surest way, or the safest way, if you will, with a certainty in terms of trying to recoup a good amount of funds for, for our families. But as the pressure out there continues to swirl, and my understanding, by the way, just for what it's worth, is we're in better shape than some of the other companies of what they might be offering their families. So there was, in fact, just something yesterday that was circulating online with another travel company, and it wasn't as, as advantageous, if you will, to what we're talking about here for our families. So you have to believe this is going to continue to be an issue, and, and hopefully, we will see something more that will come down from some legislation, but we'll certainly have to monitor that.
Any other, I'm sorry, Mr. Ragsdale?
Excuse me, I just want to make sure that I have what, what Ms. Tucker said correct. That it sounds as though unless students or families were paying very close attention to school committee meetings where we approved the Austria trip, that they wouldn't really know about that, and that, that's really not on the radar yet of, of students interested in traveling. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I will, I will just add, and it's something that Ms. Peters and I have talked about, and that is, you know, on the surface, the idea here of postponing this trip, the England trip, that is. You know, I, I've talked with her briefly about, well, is there anything to say that, that two international trips, if there was enough student interest, could not run at the same time? I think it's, that will be left to be seen in terms of, is there staffing support to, to lead those trips? And obviously, secondly, are their families interested? And that all assumes that travel bans are, are lifted, and we're in a very different place, you know, a year from now. I, I think, I don't want to, Linda's here, she can respond, but I think that, you know, the idea of two trips, perhaps even in, in travel, the ability to travel might be questionable in terms of we, we could appropriately staff them through leadership, and if we'd have enough students. But the idea of having two trips go at once is, is not beyond possibility, I don't think, if all of those things were in place. But Ms. Tucker, would you?
Well, I can't be in two places at once, so some moment else would have to take. My, my amazing travel team cannot be in two places. But I'm sure, other, other teachers have definitely floated doing trips, it just, I don't know why I'm twinkling, sorry. We just.
Can join the trip via Zoom.
I was thinking of doing like a little virtual trip, the, you know, a couple of sites, the week we're supposed to go, but I didn't know if that was just gonna, like, make everyone upset.
I would say prices now are advantageous to book.
Ms. Peters, um, is there a minimum, so if we postpone, is there a minimum number of families you would need to run that trip? Or can you run it as long as there are two, three? I mean, I'm thinking of a strings trip that they ran last year with a pretty low number of students. And I think there was some talk of whether or not they should, they should do it, because the numbers were low, but they wound up going. Is there, so is, if we don't have a huge turnout, but we have some, can it still run?
I, I don't know if there's a limit, that would depend on the pricing of the trip. That's the only thing I think may be affected. If there are fewer participants, the price is maybe different, that's what I'm thinking, I'm not 100% sure of that. Mara, do you know if we can run?
It's like six people is usually the minimum they'll run, because it's a six to one ratio for travel, for adult to travel. But we were, we had talked about, just, for the students who opt out of the trip, we can reopen the registration to see if other students, because we had about 25 kids on the waiting list for this trip, to see if they want to join the, the trip. We could just reopen the registration, and families who didn't get a chance to sign up for this trip, they could join. So hopefully, we'll still wind up with 24 kids. I think that 24, 25 is perfect, because it's a bus, it's a full bus. And we don't have to kind of share our space.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns? And then I have a question in the chat that I'd love to get to, but Mrs. Burns?
I'm sorry, I have three questions, I'm trying to be concise. So I'll start with my questions. So my first question is, if this is postponed, well, if this is postponed, will the prices that we've been quoted be locked in? That's my first, I don't, is it easier if I ask one question at a time, or would you like all three at once?
I think, I think the answer to the first one, I, I think, is that there is no extra cost if we postpone. Is that correct, Mara? I thought I read that.
That's for the families who are currently registered.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So going forth, if we do postpone this, are we, is there going to be an addendum to our current contract with, I want to say Expedia, I know it's not Expedia, it's Flora, Explorica, that if international travel is still compromised this time next year, our families may have a, more of a safety clause to fall back on, then the, you know, I'm a little, and I'm going to say, I know, I, I thank you for negotiating with them, but for why all our families don't at least get a $600, you know, get their money back, with, you know, with the exception of $600. I understand the breakdown with insurance and without, but, you know, this is an unprecedented time, and, you know, Explorica is a, is a firm that we've used consistently for many years. I think one year out of the, I don't know, almost nine that I've served, we've gone with something else. But, you know, I, I just wish I saw a little more, and maybe it's just my, you know, lack of knowledge, not being a part of this, as you have been. I just wish a little more could have been done for our families, not looking for a total reimbursement, and I'd be happy with what, you know, they've, they've offered us at this juncture, but I just have to say, I'm just a little more disappointed, they weren't a little more flexible with the current situation.
If I may just respond to that, MJ, and I think this is important to point out, and Linda, Mara, please correct me if I'm wrong, but you use the word negotiate, and I wouldn't want our parents or our community to think that this is sort of a Wilmington, you know, air quotes Wilmington, deal or offer on the table. It's not. We have been in discussions with them, but fair to say that what we are being offered here is their policy in these circumstances right now, and that would be that if there are 12 other districts that are lined up, you know, in these discussions, the same policy would be applicable. So I just, just want to point that out, that this is not, we're not sort of coming forth here to our, our parents with what the best offer is that we could do. It is just, that's what the policy is right now, you know, on, on the table for, for all schools that were in a similar situation as us.
I, I appreciate that clarification, I hope I didn't, my intent was not to misconstrue.
No, 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 but I just think of an important point that folks, you know, I just, as you're talking about this, I'm thinking if I'm a, if I'm a, a parent watching this, I, I might, I might wonder about that, so.
So is it, would there be an addendum going forward with this postponed trip? Just, again, if international travels continue to be compromised? Or any of the areas that we're visiting are still under a, some sort of country regulation with regards to what's transferring?
I have not seen that as an addendum. I haven't seen any other restrictions. I have not seen anything in the policy that addresses the what-if. I don't know if that's something that we need to explore more, but it is not anywhere that I've read in the policy that says, if something like this happens again, then. It would be nice, but I've not seen.
Mr. Ragsdale?
So from, from, I think, what we said about the postponement earlier in the call, if we postpone the trip and then parents choose later not to travel, basically, if it's a parent decision to withdraw, or that they, you know, they can't make the trip next year, or, you know, they have a senior, then they'll get either $600 or $800 back, or sorry, all but $800 or $600 back, depending on whether they purchase the travel insurance. Is there any difference if the school doesn't run the trip next year? I, I don't know why we wouldn't, but if the school chooses not to run the trip next year, does the same policy apply? Or is this something that has to do with, with parent withdrawal?
It sounds like in the policy that if we were to cancel it, that the travelers would only be entitled to a voucher. And I know that there's a voucher policy, there's, you know, a voucher for the full amount, and there are options for the voucher. I'm not exactly sure what they, I don't have the policy right in front of me, but it seems to me they would only be allowed a voucher. That's what I'm reading in the policy right now.
Okay, now, does this also presume then that that if parents withdraw for next year's trip, if we reschedule it and postpone it, that there are still enough kids to run the trip? So if we still have six plus kids to run the trip, but some other parents have withdrawn, they'll get their refunds. But what happens if we're not able to run the trip from low participation?
Mara, did you have your hand up? Oh, you're muted, sorry.
From, from what I understand, it's, it's very rare that Explorica would cancel their own trip, and that seems to be the only time that parents would get a full refund. The, the benefit to postponing is that it extends the cancellation window, because we were in such a time crunch, because the trip was so soon. If, if we, if everyone canceled, they were only going to get a small refund back. But this extends the window. So if, for some reason, the parent, if, if we choose to not go on the trip after we postpone it, or if there are other travel restrictions, parents have much more, many more options to, to get their money back later on in the year. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, I think it's, oh, sorry, go ahead. I don't know what's happening. So Jay, did you have your hand up? And then I have a couple of guests I'd like to get to.
I guess my, my question was, was sort of the same thing. Is there, is there a time limit to this whole thing, where the family has to decide whether they're gonna, you know, take the refund or take the voucher? Is there a deadline for that? They have, they have to make that decision? Or is sort of postponing it sort of allowing them lots of time to make that decision? Or how does that all work?
They have up to 110 days before the next, the postponed date to transfer the trip to another student's name, to file for the refund to cancel under the current COVID policy, that option number one in that document.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's, so that's, that's, that's good information, too. Whereas if a, you know, if, if it's a parent of a senior, and that, and that family also has a sophomore, for example, you know, that they could then transfer that money to the sophomore, when eventually they might want to go on a trip as a, sort of like another option? I'm not, I don't know if, if families are aware of, of that, you know?
Yep. That was sent out in the.
Okay.
Um, so I have a question here from Tricia Xavier. I think we've sort of answered some of this, but it says, what happens if students postpone, and next year's trip doesn't happen? Do we get a refund?
They would get the same refund, if I'm, I'm pretty sure this is correct, Linda can jump in. They'd get the, the option A refund, up to 110 days before the trip.
Okay. Lori Kane is asking, how would the voucher system work? Our family would prefer to not lose $800 if we gamble and decide to take the voucher and hope Explorica doesn't go out of business, how will that work? So I guess we're asking about the voucher system, do you have any information on that?
So if a student, if a family chose the voucher instead of the refund, they would get the voucher for the whole cost, that's a fully transferable voucher. So you could transfer it to a younger student, you could transfer it to a family member, you could use your voucher to travel with Explorica, World Strides, or any of the other companies that are under the umbrella of World Strides, like Explorica is. Or you could sell your voucher to another student to travel. But that would be a private, a private deal between two families. Explorica isn't involved in that.
Okay, and then there is one more, but Mr. Bjork, go ahead.
Just on Lori's second, second part of her question, is something I was going to ask about. What, what are our protections if this, if Explorica does not survive this situation?
That's definitely something that I've been kind of up, up nights worrying about, given the lots of, that this, the, obviously, the situation is really affecting travel companies. What I would just suggest is that if parents are going to cancel, that they cancel as soon as possible. From talking to Caribolyn, who's been our travel rep, 34 of her 37 schools who are going to travel in April have rescheduled for next year. I think that's a good sign that. But, but it, but I don't know, we don't know.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Um, there's one more question here. Explorica, this is Cheryl Healy. Explorica told me that we only have until March 31 for a decision, and then we forfeit. Can you provide something on that?
Yes, the 31st is our, I think, hence the emergency nine o'clock meeting, is the, is the last time, is the last day we have to make a decision, or it all just disappears.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions from the committee? Dr. Brand, do you want to, do you need to say anything else?
Uh, no, so I'll just, you know, hopefully, just, it's, it's the obvious, but this is, you know, a couple of things. This is obviously complicated, and it's, it's obviously worrisome and concerning in terms of the impact on our families. As you know, school committee has, per your policy, the authority to oversee, has the authority, rather, to approve international travel, and that's ultimately why we're here, in addition to, obviously, the opportunity to bring you as a committee up to speed on, on the nuances of this and the complicated aspects to it. It was my thought that what would be appropriate, certainly, to, to have you as a committee weigh in, per your authority, to, to effectively vote to approve what would, appears like we're talking about as the best course of action here, and that would be to postpone this trip to England until April of 2021.
Okay. Mrs. Burns, you're muted, I think, but you have something to say? Can't hear you, so just one sec. Tristan, can you unmute MJ?
Thank you, sorry about that.
Sorry, it takes a couple seconds for it to actually work, so I have to hit it a number of times.
Thanks, Tristan.
You're welcome.
And then just so, I just want one more clarif, I know I've already asked this. So if we have a motion to postpone, parents can decide to cancel immediately if they choose to?
Yes.
Or, or, or they have up until April, well, 110 days, actually, probably, what, like December? Or they have until some point during next school year to decide if they, if they want to cancel or, or go ahead with it?
Yeah, they have time to see how the summer, with the COVID summer works out, and see what happens.
Okay.
All right. Okay. So I think what we are, Dr. Brand is asking is for us to, someone to make a motion to postpone the Wilmington High School field trip to England, Ireland, and Wales. Would someone like to make that motion, Mrs. Burns?
I would like to make a motion to approve the postponement of the 2020 Wilmington High School field trip to England, Ireland, and Wales until 2021.
Is there a second, Mr. Fennelly? Okay, and then we'll do a roll call vote. I'll call your name, please say yes or no. Steve Bjork?
Yes.
Jen Bryson, yes. MJ Burns?
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly?
Yes.
Joe Newhouse? She's muted, can we unmute?
Yes.
Thank you. David Ragsdale?
Yes.
And Jason Samaha?
Yes.
Okay. So I think. That's what you, what we needed to do. Yes?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Burns?
Thank you, everybody.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tucker and Ms. Peters for, for navigating this and I know it's not been, I know it's very challenging and so we appreciate all the time and energy you've put into not just. Creation and the planning of the trip, but now the postponement. Of the trip and all the feelings that come along with that. So thank you so much for, for navigating that for us and obviously for the leadership team's leadership. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
I have a.
Thanks, everyone.
Can we make a motion to adjourn?
We have to adjourn.
Don't go anywhere, school committee.
And, and roll call.
Yep. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, so Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Samaha and roll call. Steve Bjork?
Yes.
Jen Bryson, yes. MJ Burns? Jesse Fennelly?
Yes.
Joe Newhouse?
I think Joe took off.
Oh no, does that, what do we do? We get her back on?
We have, we have a quorum.
All right. David Ragsdale?
Yes.
Jay Samaha?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.
Thanks, guys.
Please save that chat. I think another question.